Counselors now in session, please stand for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you just asking you, Lord, that you be in the midst, guide us and direct us, Lord, and give us wisdom to understand the wrongs and the rights, Lord. We ask that you be the guide and comforter for those who have lost their loved ones in this past week, especially to the McClendon family and to the Wright family. We ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Clerk Golick, roll call.
Markovich, here. Spitali.
Here.
Vanez.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Zalinas.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Enosah.
Opinker.
Number three, reading of minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
I accept the minutes from the February 27, 2013 meeting.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by?
Second.
Councilman Emerson, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes passed. Number four, approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims for February 20th through March 6th for council meeting, March 11th, 2013, beginning with claims dated 2/5/13 and ending with claims dated 3/6/13 through claim number 1108 through claim number 1340, for a total of $9,862,977. I so move.
Second.
It's motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, to accept the claims, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Spitali.
I'm a twill- a twist, twill- a twisting, Councilman Markovich.
Markovich.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilman Markovich.
I have one addition, claim number 1341, for the Whiting Lions Club, donation of $50 to their pancake breakfast from Councilman Kalwinski, I so move.
There's an addition by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion on the addition? Clerk Golick, roll call vote on the addition.
Markovich, yes. Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosah.
Opinker. Yes.
Addition passes, eight zero, one absent. Now on the claims as written. Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich, yes. Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosah.
Opinker. Yes.
Claims pass, eight zero, one absent. Number five, moving on to public hearing, public hearing is now open for ordinance Anybody that wishes to speak on ordinance 13-06, please come forward. Anybody would like to speak on ordinance 13-06? Hearing none, seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Number six, communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
First letter is from the Lake Shore Chamber of Commerce, general membership lunch in Wednesday, March 27, 2013, 11:30 a.m. networking, 12:00 p.m. lunch, East Chicago Mayor Anthony Koppin presents East Chicago 2013, Ameristar Casino, East Chicago 777, Ameristar Boulevard, East Chicago, Indiana 46312, costs $18, reservations are required. Please call the Lake Shore Chamber of Commerce office at 219-931-1000, please reserve by March 25th, 23rd, 2013. Next correspondence is Meal on Wheels, dear Northwest Indiana leaders, as a community leader, I invite you to join me and the city of Gary in the national 2013 March for Meals campaign, bringing awareness to the issue of senior hunger and serious problems plaguing our community and other communities across the United States. On March 20th, 2013, elected officials, community leaders from all across the country will deliver meals to seniors. March for Meals is intended to increase public awareness, recruit new volunteers, increase local funding for Meals on Wheels of Northwest Indiana. On this day, you will have an opportunity to witness the impact that Meals on Wheels has in the community as you volunteer in assisting on delivering route with a seasoned volunteer. You are in a unique position to support this effort. As a community leader, you have the recognition and strong voice of Northwest Indiana and can help in furthering the mission of Meals on Wheels as you work together to end senior hunger in our communities. If you're interested in joining me and the community leaders on Wednesday, March 20th, 2013, for March for Meals, please complete the enclosed letter of comment to receive in literature for the day. We are happy to answer any questions, please contact Sandra Noah, Executive Director, at You can also email her at SandraA. MealsOnWheelsIndiana.org. Thank you for your serious consideration of our request, though your investment of time, energy, you will gain valuable insight in the impact of senior hunger in our community. We look forward to hearing from you sincerely. Karen Freeman-Wilson, Mayor of the City of Gary. Next correspondence is a thank you for joining the Purdue County Mayweather Institute in celebrating March 22nd, 2013, agenda is 9:30 to 10:00 a.m., refreshments, 10:00 a.m., welcome introduction by Kay Nelson, Director of Environmental Affairs, Northwest Indiana Forum, open remarks by Chancellor Thomas Cole, Purdue University, Cal State, remarks by Mark Lopez, Chief of Staff at the Office of the Congressman Pete Biskowski, 10:15 a.m., keynote speaker Jack Whitman, National Director of Gold Science Lay Science Company, and the title of First Steps in the Winter Supply and Planning, Indiana SVE 132, 132. 10:45 a.m., remarks by George Noel, Director of Purdue Institute, and 11:00 a.m. is Q&amp;A session and discussion, 11:30 a.m. is closing remarks by Kay Nelson, this Purdue University, Northwest.
Any other communications? Any other communications, communications is now closed. Moving on to committee reports.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Bring counsel as a whole, and bring out 1306.
All right, ordinance 1306 will be coming out. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? The report is now closed. Ordinance is third and final passage.
Ordinance number 1306, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance to appropriate funds in the Hotel Motel Innkeeper's Tax Fund for Hammond Economic Development Marketing.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
A motion for third and final reading for 1306.
Second.
It's motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Kalwinski, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
This comes out every year, this is for economic development purposes, the fee on this that they have is $32,446.52.
Is there any other discussion on ordinance 13-06? Clerk Golick, roll call vote on 1306.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosah. Opinker.
Yes.
Ordinance 13-06 passes, eight zero, one absent.
President Opinker, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Moving on to number nine, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 13-07, sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez, and ordinance to amend ordinance number 9182, also known as the salary ordinance for the Hammond City Court as it relates to probation officers.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for first and second reading and refer to Finance Committee on March 25th.
Second.
First and second reading is motion by Councilwoman Vanez, second by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like Clerk Golick to read those salaries.
Councilman Higgs.
I think the clerk is waiting for you to tell them to read.
Oh, sorry, I was reading to myself, Clerk Golick.
Administrative manager, $38,210, chief bailiff, $37,915, graffiti coordinator and part-time bailiff, $36,727, civil referee, $25,096, criminal referee, $25,096, executive secretary, $34,165, community service coordinator and part-time bailiff, $28,817, chief public defender, $15,162, assistant public defender, $15,162, chief probation officer, new salary increased, $62,305, probation officer, new salary increased, $46,377, probation officer, new salary decreased, $35,818, probation secretary, $30,301, director of community service, new temporary position and salary, $32,772.
Thank you, Clerk Golick, is there any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
In reading over, in preparation for this, I did speak with Jeff Harken, Judge Harken, and when Councilman Higgs requested the salaries be read, for the chief probation officer, $62,305, that is two positions, we are, the budget is being corrected from both the judges and the adult probation portions of the budget, so that was a little bit misleading.
Any other discussion? All those in favor for first and second, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes. Moving on.
Item C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, and L, ordinance 13-09, sponsored by Councilman Emerson, and ordinance amending ordinance numbers 4304, 8383, 8552, 8602, and ordinance 8814, also known as section 150.025 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to building permit fees in the city of Hammond. Ordinance 1310, sponsored by Councilman Emerson, and ordinance amending ordinance number 3351, also known as section 151.35 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to electrical license transfer and renewal in the city of Hammond. Ordinance 13-11, sponsored by Councilman Emerson and Councilman Spitali, and ordinance amending ordinance number 3351, also known as section 151.36 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to the revocation of an electrical license in the city of Hammond. Ordinance 13-12, sponsored by Councilman Emerson and Councilman Spitali, and ordinance amending ordinance numbers 3351, and ordinance 4328, also known as section 151.37 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to electrical license fee schedule in the city of Hammond. Ordinance 13-13, sponsored by Councilman Emerson and Spitali, and ordinance amending ordinance number 8888, also known as section 151.51 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to electrical permit fees in the city of Hammond. Ordinance 13-14, sponsored by Councilman Emerson and Spitali, and ordinance amending ordinance number 4880, also known as section 154.19 and section 154.28 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to HVAC, that's heating and ventilation and air conditioning, examination criteria and fee schedules in the city of Hammond. Ordinance 13-15, sponsored by Councilman Emerson and Spitali, and ordinance amending ordinance number 4880, also known as section 154.23 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to HVAC reciprocal licenses. Ordinance number 13-16, sponsored by Councilman Emerson and Spitali, and ordinance amending ordinance numbers 3456, 3851, 4588, 7658, and ordinance 8893, also known as section 150.024 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to contractor fee schedule in the city of Ordinance 13-17, sponsored by Councilman Emerson and Spitali, and ordinance amending ordinance number 4880, also known as section 154.25 and 154.26 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to the revocation of an HAVC license in the city of Hammond. Ordinance number 13-18, sponsored by Councilman Emerson and Spitali, and ordinance amending ordinance numbers 4880, 8383, 8779, and 8887, also known as section 154.42 and 154.43 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to HAVC permit fees in the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I move that ordinances 1309 through 1318 be moved to first and second reading.
It's motion by Councilman Emerson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali for first and second.
And refer to committee.
Refer to his counsel as a whole, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Basically, what these ordinances are trying to do is to make current, and what I think they will do, is make current and uniform, and bring consistency to our fee structure, you know, our permit fees that in some cases go back to the 1970s, the 1990s, in other words, and in the 80s, so for three decades, some of them are three decades old, and the newest is over a decade old, in terms of what we charge, or if we charge fees, that other communities have been doing, and we're just trying to get some consistency, and again, bring us up into the 2013. That's the short version of what they do in Councilman Spitali, that's true for electrical and high vet.
Yeah, the fees, Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
The fees that they charge in Gary is $150, East Chicago is 100, and Crown Point is 150. This time, we hadn't been having any fees, the problem they had, they had tests lined up for people, they wouldn't show up, so this way, they put up a fee, then they'll show up, or they'll lose the money on that. This also, too, does not pertain to any of the taxpayers, won't reflect any of those.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of first and second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes.
President Opinker, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to number 10, resolutions or are none? Number 11, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
While the times is here, I just want to make one thing perfectly clear, the incident that occurred, that was rebutted or commented on, it was not just my mother present, but there was the general public there, and that was my concern, and that was my reasoning for addressing that particular issue, and so I wanted to make that perfectly clear, it wasn't not just my mother present, but the general public was there, and it was very disrespectful, I said at last meeting, and I still feel the same way, it was very disrespectful.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Received the letter from the Sanitary District of Hammond, and says, dear Mr. Higgs, this letter is going to address your letter to the Board of Works, myself, and Stan Dastotny. 1050 Dracker, the problem is actually a 1048 Dracker, who has an issue with their internal line that is causing the cave-in, the homeowner has been notified to call the plumber for required, since this is a private line issue, please review a copy of the last correspondence attached to the letter. 1007 Lions, the first inquiry referencing this address, field investigation resulted that no Cinco's located on the street or parkway over the sewer manes, we contacted the homeowners who stated they had no problems, or even complained of having any, however, I find six located requests going back to 22,000 for this address, if you have any additional information on the location of Cinco, I would like to meet with our inspector on site, please. Feel free to call Michael Superintendent, HSD Sewer Maintenance, Mike Erger, PhD, District Manager, Sanitary Board of Commissioners, Board of Public Works, City Engineering, City Council, and counsel as a whole.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Received the letter in regards to an incident that occurred by Harrison Park on the bike trail, where two men jumped in front of me riding a motorcycle, causing me to fall to the ground, demanded my scooter and keys at gunpoint, this was on February 23rd, 2013, so I'm requesting a letter be sent to the chief in regards to patrolling that area as much as possible, and to deter the crime or incidents of this nature from happening in the future. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs to send a letter to Chief Police, Brian Miller, on the patrolling of the bike trail, second by Councilman Zalinas, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Received the correspondence from DeShana A. Robinson, DeShana Robinson at 530 Waltham, saying that there's mold in her basement, she's requesting the inspectors from the inspection department to come and inspect the property, and I have her phone number, I won't call that out, but certainly I'll give it to Clerk Golick, and he can forward it, so I move that we send a letter to the code enforcement in regards to addressing this issue, she lives in the basement apartment at 530 Waltham, I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs to send the letter, second by Councilman Spitali, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other new and unfinished business?
Okay, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, I have resolution 13R-09 that I would like to bring out for final passage.
Motion by Councilwoman Vanez, second by Councilman Spitali, to bring out resolution 13-09. Clerk Golick, do we?
Point order.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
The rules have to be suspended in order for us to go on correspondence with that resolution, or order.
That's right.
So move.
Second.
It's motion to suspend rules by Councilman Vanez, second by Councilman Emerson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
13R-09.
Resolution. Resolution 13R-09, sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez, a resolution authorizing the Hammond Police Department to apply for a 2013 Indiana Criminal Justice Institute grant to create a crime mapping system in Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
This grant application does require the approval of the city council, it is a grant.
We need a first and second, Councilwoman Vanez, first.
First and second.
Resolution. Oh, okay, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Final passage.
Final passage.
Second.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Vanez.
Alrighty. This is a grant not to exceed $25,000, that will coordinate with IUN, who will collect data regarding occurrences here in the city of Hammond, and it will help the police department target problem areas and add additional patrols.
Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote on resolution 13-09.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosah. Opinker.
Yes.
Resolution 13-09 passes, eight zero, one absent.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Request to return to the regular order of business.
Second.
It's motion by Councilwoman Vanez, second by Councilman Higgs, to go back to regular order of business, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Regular order of business, any other new and finished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
At 912 Merrill Street, the ornamental light is out, needs to be fixed, as well as at 1150 Moss Street, it's been out for a couple of weeks, I'm requesting that a letter be sent to the engineering department in regards to these particular issues, I so move.
Second.
It's motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Zalinas, to send a letter to the lighting department, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
For those who would like to do good in your community, I'd like to announce some upcoming crime watch meetings, Tuesday, March 12th, citywide crime watch will meet 6:00 p.m. at the police station, Wednesday, March 13th, Woodmark Crime Watch is going to meet at 6:00 p.m. at the YMCA, Thursday, March 14th, the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet at 6:30 p.m. at St. Joseph College, Tuesday, March 19th, East Hammond-Pulmon Crime Watch meets 6:30 p.m. at Ophelia Steen Center, Wednesday, March 20th, the Lafayette Neighborhood Group will meet at 6:30 p.m. at Lafayette School, Thursday, March 21st, Hessville Crime Watch will meet at 7:00 p.m. at the Jean Shepherd Center, also on Thursday, March 21st, the South Hammond Crime Watch will meet- Also on Thursday, March 21st, the South Hammond Crime Watch will meet 7:00 p.m. at the Hammond Housing Authority Building. And that is how change happens, one gesture, one person, one moment at a time. Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Like to wish you, your family, and everyone's family, a very happy St. Patrick's Day, where everyone is Irish, even if you're one-fourth or zero Irish. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Emerson, any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Just to reemphasize on what he stated, we are all equal, and so certainly I, uh, I have no regrets in, in regards to whether you're Irish, Polish, or whatever, let's celebrate it and be happy and do what's right for our great city.
Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression, Mr. George Stoya. Public expression is now closed. Motion, George?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Salinas, second by Councilman Higgs.